...to the historical commission meeting. And my concern was, there's a green line that's considered a historic overlay amendment. And I brought that up because my perspective for me sits in. And my understanding of it was that it was a practical error that was called in. But it remains in this pack that is in front of me today. So that green line is outside of the formal historic local map that all these restrictions were applied to or regulations, I shouldn't say that. But in any case, I brought that up back in the December meeting at the public gathering. I followed up early December with an email to the chair as well as the city planner about what my understanding that I got from the session was and that that language would be removed or amended was in incorrect phrases. My concern is that there's nothing in the summary email to you about what that amendment actually means. There's nothing in the guidelines of what that amendment means. And my take on it would be that it's an area that can be expanded into this part of South Port in time. And if that's the case, I have bigger concerns because I have a, I live in a 568-foot cottage on a lot that's about a quarter acre. And I love the cottage and I do want to have plans. I'm going through some permanent, well not permanent, bidding online. But under these restrictions of forever to apply, it states that in that 26-foot cottage on a 50-foot wide lot, I can't expand wider to the back of that cottage. It also says, let's say things that I have to, you know, whatever comes up in life, if the cottage has to be downed, it would have to be reconstructed as a Robert Allen 1970 cottage in that mass and exactly what that's what brings. So I brought that up and I think what I'd like to see is clarification of what that amendment truly means or if it needs to, what that potential could be to expand that history, some kind of definition to what that means. And so we can plan around that potentially. So I did talk to our neighbors across the street from me and that kind of thing. They were not aware of that amendment designation or what the implications of that are. So if some clarification, I guess you're gonna read again on Thursday, I can tell you that's a lot of work. Thank you.
Pat Hufelman. My name's Pat Hufelman. Curtain and...
Can you hear the button?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to come on? Press here to turn my camera.
Please.
How about that? Thank you for putting that little number on there. Pat Hufelman. And I am entering my 29th year of living at 119 R. Avenue and paying city taxes. And I am here today to maintain my reputation and also to talk about et cetera. First of all, I want to say I hope that April, maybe by Thursday night, I didn't get a chance to download your agenda for Thursday night yet this morning because I usually don't get out this early, but I'm here for you. And also, hopefully, it's going to be on the agenda. It's going to be settled on the agenda on Thursday night. And that's to get rid of this albatross around our neck of what to do with the old county courthouse. And I think it has gone around for nine years to everybody who could possibly think of anything to say or to do about it. And now it's time for something to happen. And guess what? You folks are the only ones in this town of, what, 4,500 people now, who can do anything about it. Everybody's talked about it. Everybody's carried on about it. And everybody's said, where are we gonna get the money about it? And we've been doing that for nine years. It's time to make the decision and I hope that you're gearing yourselves up to vote because when you raise your hand on that motion, whether it's Thursday night or Lord help us if it's further down the road, then you're the ones that are making that decision. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen next year, 10 years from now. I'm sure that Todd Coring is sick and tired of talking about how to put the police in that building. And I am standing up for Todd. I'm standing up with the police. I'm standing up for doing something with that building. And I'm hoping that the four of you who voted yes, the four will continue to vote yes, and the two of you who voted no may have changed a heart. And if you don't, then we'll live with whatever happens. If it turns out to be three and three, we'll look to our mayor. And if it turns out worse than that, we may just have to see what November brings. Anyway, that's my first concern. And I wanted to come this morning and say that even though it's not on your agenda today, you won't be talking about it, I'm sure, but it is being talked about all over town. And it's time to do something about it. The other thing I've been concerned about lately is, where are all the wise people in our town? We've got three or maybe more former mayors out there somewhere. How many former members of the Alderman Board are out there somewhere? We never see them sitting in the blue chair and we never hear from them. Where, where does little Robert Albert now? Where's Joe Plata? Where's Tommy Harrelson? Where's some of these folks that have been around South Port all their lives? Who don't make any comments about anything, rarely, that's going on in this city? Where is their good advice? Where are they when we need somebody to say, well, here's what I think? So I leave it up to the rest of us, our newcomers, who've only been here almost 13 years. So that's something that's been bothering me lately. Another thing that I'm here this morning for, and I don't see it yet, but looking for Charles Tru, to hear the presentation from the Historic Design Committee. That committee's been working two years now, over two years, right, Mo? And Mo has been in there working as hard as she can. I have been to quite a few of their meetings because I am a historian in this town and I'm concerned about the history. That's why I keep standing up here year after year trying to see are we gonna do anything with that courthouse? And I am concerned about this historical commission and they've had to jump through a lot of hoops, you would not believe, to get to where they are. I'm concerned even further that when it's presented to the public, because it's gotta go to layman, it's gotta go to the planning board, and then it's gotta come back to you, then wine chipping again. Okay, it doesn't go to the planning board, am I correct?
Yes, yes. Approval of the district.
Approval of the district, approval of something has to go to the planning board or you, who are the only ones who makes the decisions for our city, get to vote on whether or not we're going to have a historical commission or not. We've tried this in the years that I have been here several times, two to three times, to establish a historical, and maybe we didn't do it right, like Mo has guided this commission to do. And as soon as it got in this room and got before the public, when people showed up and there were standing room only, it didn't go very far. I was the public, what's happening? Are they gonna have it now or have this commission worked for two, over two years and get nowhere? That's, that's the next big blow up we're gonna have in town, I'm sure. But, but right now, we're at the point where this commission and these leaders of that commission want to present it to you. And whatever happens after today's presentation of the historical commission, we'll see. Okay, now, let me think. What if I'm just, I'm just saying it all that, because really I prefer to stay home and watch you on whatever. Teen, are we on a, is that what it's called now? Cheyenne, Cheyenne's brain is going crazy, I'm sure, trying to get us online here. Because I don't have to get up and come in here and you don't have to see me and your faces don't have to drop when you're sitting, walking the door. But I was wanting to say this, and I've already expressed it to some of you, not very personally, because I'm, I'm a lady and I've already had my birthday this year, so I'm official of a lady who does not have to wave friends and influence people anymore. And I'm very happy about that because I get to say whatever I want to say. And hopefully you'll take it either good or bad, whichever happens. But there's a notice on this paper that you hand out every time the agenda we meet here. And one of the first things it says is please turn off your cell phones. I would like to invite the board of Alderman to turn off your telephones cell phones when you're in the meeting. I know that they are part of us and are a part of some of us. And we have to have it in our hand or by our sides at all times because the dog might die and we might need to know that. I don't see a policeman here today, but usually we have a policeman in this room when, are we here? Anybody? No? When we're meeting. So my suggestion, when you think you're gonna have an emergency in two or three or four hours that you're meeting here, have your family members say you have to call the police. Don't call me during a board meeting. And one of the policemen will come up and whisper in your ear, you need to come home, the dog's sick or something. We don't need, or you don't need, and I mean very frankly here, just telling what I think and what I observe, either here in the room when I'm here or at home when I'm watching you on this live stream. What I'm seeing is, appears to me as an observer, that you as Alderman, somehow you are more interested in what's on your telephones than you are what's going on in the room. Eventually it's one of those boring presentations with all those slides going up on the screen over there. So that's one thing that bothers me. And especially at home because when this camera is on, wherever it is, it's not a drone over you. We see all of you at once. So Mark may be talking down here, but Robert may be up here on his phone or not paying attention. And he may think I'm out of the picture right now because he's zooming in on Mark. Well, sometimes they're zooming on Mark, sometimes they're, we're still observing all of you. So keep that in mind. Because it makes a difference is how you behave when you're sitting up there as our only seven people who can make decisions, official decisions for this city. And while we're at it, let's talk a little bit about the body language. You may not think that that makes a difference, but it does. When you're upset about something that's going on, your body language makes a difference. When you're slamming your phone or shut, when you're putting in glasses on and off, when you're throwing your pins down, all those things make a difference. We're watching you. We see what's going on. We think, why are they, why are they so upset about that? And here's the big one, talking over each other. That is very annoying in any kind of panel meeting like this. And you folks have gotten a little bit of that. One person doesn't get out a whole sentence before another one is saying something over that person. There, in my opinion, as only one outstanding observer, I would like to say non-board of Alderman have a little more decorum in the meetings. And that means not talking over each other if you can possibly, like waiting for the mayor or someone who's got Robert's rules of orders in their head, maybe it'll be our manager or somebody to say, whoa, whoa. And sometimes, before we get to the whoa, whoa, it's already about to begin to let go. So let me see, is anything you want me to do now? If I have it yet, I'd be happy to do it because I'm a role this morning. And I don't want to say all of this just to be annoying, but it, these are real things. These are things that matter. And when you are talking to each other, when you're not paying attention to what one of your fellow Alderman is saying, when your body, when your head, when your ears are not turned toward that person, we see them and we think, well, I guess they don't care what he's saying or what she's saying. And we do, we care how you behave. And so, and so, I'm a great grandmother, I have adult great grandchildren, and so I get to talk like this. Some of you are almost as always maybe talking, I'm quite there, yeah. But you know what? I don't win friends or influence people. At least I haven't today, I'm sure. But thank you for the opportunity to stand up here. I've got a house that's not full and we've got 15 deep away to speed because I've done pretty good jobs with that already. Thank you for the time. Cheyenne, good luck. I hope you get where you need to be with electronics and all this stuff. Thank you.
I have two emails that were sent in last night.
I'm sorry. I have one.
I'm sorry, two emails that were sent in.
Okay.
So the first one is from Catherine Hufelman. She said, it is really sad that some of the powers to be in South Port, Board of Alderman and Planning Board, would even question where the South Port Police Department should be located and even sadder that they don't listen to their chief of police. They're totally disrespectful of Todd Coring as the chief and his knowledge of what his department needs are and where the police department needs to be located. One thing we're remember was even quite arrogant towards the chief at the March 27th meeting, grilling him as if he was being cross-examined in a courtroom. Even worse, there seems to be no respect for South Port's history and the old courthouse was a government building from its beginning and should be kept as one going forth. It is the perfect location for the police present in the heart of downtown South Port, which is where it is located before the building was abandoned. City Hall needs to stay where it is located as it is easily accessible by the public from House Street and South Streets. If it was downtown, it would create even more traffic and that area is already a traffic nightmare. Perhaps the two boards should take lessons from Dozier Memorial Hospital and St. Philip's Municipal Bridge. Both have been in the same place as when they were built and they have, and when they need to grow, they purchased adjacent land when it became available in order to do so. Catherine Hufelman, 40, Forest Oaks Drive, South Port, North Carolina. And then I have Kathy St. George Bonstone to the mayor and Board of Alderman. I am writing in support of our historic old courthouse, AKA old city hall, meeting the new location for South Port Police Department. Having grown up and lived in this town, I've seen the building as the county courthouse and the city hall. I've seen it exterior go from brick to stucco and extensions added to make more room. And lastly, I've seen it for too many years now, a neglected old building sitting in the middle of downtown, early mold, so now I'd like to see it used by the police department as their new headquarters. It seemed to take an unusually long time for the planning board to give a recommendation to the Board of Alderman and understand that they rejected the idea of it being used for the police department. I, along with many others, are still trying to understand why the planning board plays any part, much less such a big one, in this decision. I feel the planning board treated Chief Coring in a rude and disrespectful manner of the last meeting that the planning board chairperson allowed to be filmed. One planning board member commented on social media that the building was already too small for the needs of the police department, to which I respectfully disagree. I think the city will run out of space for new developments long before the police upgrade the courthouse. So as an old South Port native whose family has been here for many generations and who loves this town and her history, I'll just add that it seems to be sometimes have too many wannabe big fish in our little pond and some could think the natives and longtime locals' opinions don't matter. Maybe they need to wonder how South Port survived for over 200 years without them. Thank you, Kathy St. George Bonstone, South Port. Kathy.
Thank you. Interesting motion to close, one comment? Motion in a second, if you have a comment. Not hearing any, all favor stand on.
Aye.
Any opposed, in case you're not listening. Next, somebody with, interesting motion to approve the agenda. Okay, there's a motion in a second. And any comment? Not hearing any, all of you of us say aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. The first topic, Mr. Davis. Capital Improvement Program. Good morning. A capital improvement program is a multi-year plan that's used to define the scope, schedule, financing of major capital improvement projects for the city government. The city of South Port is now in its third year of preparing and updating this program. The intent of the fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2031 program is to make a plan that shows steady progress in preserving the capital assets of the city. Typically, a capital asset is defined as a city-owned physical resource that has a useful life of more than five years and has significant value. Capital projects undertaken to install, improve the useful life, and therefore improve the useful life of capital assets, they typically occur as one-time projects, but they may be phased over a period of fiscal years depending upon financing and other factors. Capital projects are typically differentiated for ordinary repairs or recurring maintenance. Some examples of capital projects include land acquisition, the construction of or major improvements to public buildings, recreation areas, roads and utilities, and the acquisition of large equipment such as fire trucks. Building a capital improvement program is a multi-month process that requires input and coordination with various departments to define the project's scope, cost, schedule, and financing methods. When a capital improvement program is finalized, projects within the first year of that plan are used as the basis for the capital projects portion of the annual operating budget. Capital improvement projects will commence once the annual budget is adopted or when other financing is obtained. Unless they're phased projects that occur over multiple fiscal years, the completed projects are removed from subsequent CIP documents. Question. Every attempt will be made to retain the capital projects scheduled for their given fiscal year. However, the document is in deep dynamic and may, may change based on several factors. Financing, priorities, and other factors can have an impact on the scheduling of the projects. Those projects may be moved up and may be moved back or even eliminated from the plan. The annual review and revision of the capital improvement program ensures that the intent of the program is being met and it provides community leaders and city officials with a clear view of what lies ahead. We'll approach the board again for a formal adoption of the final capital improvement program once the annual budget is finalized and approved. I believe that you have a copy of the draft, capital...
...program in your packet. And again, this is intended for some general discussion today. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Is there any questions from the board?
I have a couple, sir.
Sure.
And these are not directed towards you. These, I just clarification for people who are gonna look at this.
Understood.
This capital improvement plan does not prioritize any of these programs, is that correct?
In, in subsequent years, out years, fiscal year 27 through 31, they are not prioritized.
They're... The board does that, but the plan, if you just read the plan, it does not prioritize the, the...
Correct. The projects are initiated through the various departments within the city and they're placed in the plan with the intent that the board prioritize those projects.
And this plan, if one was to read it in isolation, just pick up the plan and read it, there is, I haven't found anything yet to, to talk about the full cost of each plan. There's a cost for the, to build the thing, but to maintain the thing, to staff the thing, to buy the equipment to go in the thing, those costs are not in this plan, am I correct in that assumption?
You are correct. This, this, those would be considered annual operating and maintenance costs, which are not in the...
And so if somebody were to pick up this plan and see that in the next two years one department has $4 million approximately worth of issues that they would like to have fixed, there's nothing in this plan as it's written because it only identifies the want or the need, depending on your point of view. It doesn't define where that money's gonna come from to do that plan, is that correct?
There, there are intended funding sources that are called out of the plan, whether they come from the general fund or whether they come from grants or other enterprise funds such as the fire fund or electrical fund. But not as the, not as far as the annual operating and maintenance of that facility would go.
Well, there's, we hope to get grants.
Correct.
As opposed to this is a list of grants and we're sure that, you can't be sure of any grants that you're going to get. What I'm trying to get at is that all, most of these things are, in my opinion, good things. That's not the point. The point is, is that as we go through this, if people are waving this, is that you, you agreed to this plan and thus now you have to implement the plan in its entirety, which I have had tossed in my face in the past, is not the real purpose of the plan. The plan is to say, these are the things we'd like to do. This is the general cost of what these things would like to be. And now we have to figure out whether there's any money to actually do any of them, as opposed to a mandate that you have to do them.
That is correct. The plan is, is indeed a plan and it shows that the city is cognizant of the assets that we have and the cost of maintaining those assets. It would help with future grants, bonding, and, and other financial avenues that the city wants to pursue. Again, having the document in hand is a, is a great, is a great value.
No, I think it is a great value and, and, and we have to, it's a, it's part of the process that you have to do in order to have any kind of structure to your, what, what you're gonna spend to. But my, as I said, my point is, is that just because eventually we'll, we will probably approve this plan or some modification of the plan, it doesn't mean that we're committed to doing everything that's in the plan. We've had other plans, like master plans, that are of the same nature. They're things we'd like to do, but how you finance them is compared to everything else. What are you gonna cut or how are you gonna give the money? All those other issues are out there. And somebody, and people confuse comprehensive plans and parks and rec plans and this kind of plan as to a mandate, we must do this. My point is, and you've... is, and you've clearly explained it, that it's only one facet of the whole project.
You are correct, yes.
Thank you, kind sir. Is there any other questions of the board?
The state and federal funds line, those are monies that have already been committed, correct? We're not waiting to hear, are we getting this? This is money that we already either have in place or has been committed to us?
In the current fiscal year, that is probably the case. In subsequent fiscal years, it is again a planning tool, so we are hoping to get grants in order to accomplish the projects where those, where state and federal grants are in a given line item. So in out years 27, 28, 29, we may be anticipating grant money or application of grants for some of that work, but we may not have them in hand yet.
Okay, and then the other sources is that, because there's a line for state and federal funds, and then there's a line for other sources. The other sources would be those grants?
The other sources would be something other than a state or federal fund. The state and federal funding would include the grant money, or loans, or participatory grants where the city is obligated for a portion of that grant money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Just an observation. I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, if this is what you were meaning. They do have seven projects asterisk, with asterisks and red that was, or designates as priority project in 2026. And I don't know if maybe the confusion of that was perhaps what you were referencing. So I don't know, I know those are recommendations for us, but if we're releasing the document, it kind of sounds like those are the priorities. So we might want to soften that language.
Those are the priorities of the staff.
Right, right. But, but, you know...
I don't, I just did...
Soften it as included as recommendations from that, as, just for the public, just so, because we haven't had all that discussion.
Yeah, that was my point, is that, this is a staff-generated document.
Correct.
And then it goes to the board to prioritize again.
Correct.
And then try to figure out how we're gonna manage as many as we could manage under any particular year. And that was my point, but thank you very much.
The final document, if I may, would be edited to include in the current fiscal year those projects which do have funding. The others would be re-categorized into out years.
The fact that there's already funding in place for some of these, is that why there's no red asterisk to designate high priority?
That is correct.
So...
Those would be projects that we're...
Shoreline stabilization and the underground electric lines and so on. They're not starred, but we do have funding sources.
That is correct.
Well, for the underground, we have funding sources for another couple of years, and then we run out of money. So that's an issue that we'll have to figure out in the prioritization, how much we spend each year, and get a better idea of, and maybe others have a better idea, but I don't know how much money... The electrical fund, enterprise fund, has, as, I'm gonna use the word profit, money that can go into that after we pay for the electricity and everything else. So we have to, we have to work on that, well, SEF has to work on that, because they're smarter than I am on it. Figuring out at 1.8 million, 1.6 million, we could be, I think, there's only a couple of million, about 3 million maybe left, 3 million? So you only get two of those, and then you're out of money. So projecting out over a whole bunch of years for that, math doesn't work that way. So we have to figure out how that's going to work. And we move forward. But sir, as always, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have one more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our estimated project cost for fiscal year 26 is 7.7 million, and then we go up to 25 million for fiscal year 27, and then 20 million for fiscal year 28. So we're gonna have to take a good look at what actually can be done here, because jumping from under eight to 25 is a significant thing to look at.
And Mr. Mayor, I would recommend, if the board wants to form a subcommittee to further investigate this, or if we wanna have a work session, especially as we go into the budget for FY '26, I think that would be wise for you all to dig into this more and see what the board's priorities as we go through the budget over the next few months.
It may be too soon to add another, I mean, too late to add another item to the Thursday agenda, but I think we need to have some chatting about what that would look like. Maybe on Thursday, you could at least bring us a, an outline of what your thoughts are on that in further detail? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next one is Bonnet's Creek Stormwater. Tom Z, sir?
Good morning. This is a follow-up to last month's meeting when I talked about the brick grant, and we had gotten approval to submit the application. We needed to get a consultant on board to design the project. So I've received the proposal from the consultant. It's the same consultant who did the stormwater mapping and modeling, and has all the hydraulics and everything on the system. And they're looking at a contract for $478,000 to do the design to get the application in. This is for a 70% design, because once we submit the application, FEMA is gonna have corrections that need to be made, or changes that they would like. So this would be to get the application in, then there would be a follow-up contract with them later on, for about another 150,000 to 250,000. We don't know that amount yet because we don't know what comments we're getting from FEMA. So at this point, just looking for authorization from the board to award a contract to WK Dixon in the amount of $478,000 for the Bonnet's Creek Phase 1 stormwater improvements.
Is there any questions?
Tom, the only benchmark I saw date-wise said October 2025. I didn't know if, for it, if you needed to have harder dates for the different meetings and all the different things you had listed in there.
No, at this point, the only date that matters is the October 31st date to get the application into the brick grant in FEMA. After that, and we really haven't even gotten the full application package from FEMA, they're still working out the details with the dates and everything. The only date currently that we have is that October 31st for the application. And that's part of the reason for the two phases on the design also.
Do you see any hurdles that are gonna be a problem between now and October 31st to get the application out on time?
Not at all. Not at all.
I need a clarification question, sir.
Go ahead.
I know you're used to this. So you have the end of October as the date that we think we have to have the whole package in ready. And in the contract here, what's the date that they have to have the stuff to us?
They have to have it to us by October 31st, so we...
And we found that when we make those dates just like that, for shoreline, we are running up against the wall, and why don't we have it October 1st? Why don't we have some breathing room in here to get, make sure that, and there's milestones to show along the way, they have to do this by this time? We have written these contracts for decades, and as Pauline Mosteller has pointed out, we need to do better on this whole thing to keep their, everybody's feet to the fire, including our own.
We could put whatever deadline we want is, you know, they know it has to be done by October 31st.
But so do the shoreline people, but we're running up against a wall here. And we do this, what we started, my first experience was that House Street project. At some point in time, we have to have these contracts with harder deadlines, with penalties and all of that stuff written in here. I mean, I think we need to move forward on this, but when we get presented a contract, it has to have this stuff, because we have been just taking over the coals. So I don't know how...
I mean, you know, whoever makes the motion can make the motion that, you know, everything is completed by October 1st.
I know what a deadline means. In journalism, that means the story's dead. It's not gonna get into the paper. But for us, we can set deadlines all day long, but we also need penalties. And we, and as far as I know, we don't have penalties in our contracts, and I think that we shouldn't.
That's been my rallying cry for quite some time now, is that we need penalties, bonuses, all of that stuff. Again, we come back in here, and we have these contracts without the stuff in it. And we cannot, I don't, the unforeseen things on our side, their side, everybody's side, we have to keep ourselves focused on how we cannot allow this to happen again.
Noah, what do we need to do to incorporate penalties? I'm not in favor of bonuses. Bonuses is that they got the contract in the first place. But the penalties, how do we get that into these contracts?
I think the biggest penalty is the money. So if we withhold part of the funds until we receive those designs, so whatever their payment schedule is, if we pay them half upfront, pay the other half when the deliverables arrive, and then also have a clawback phase within the contract, so if they don't reach the deadline, or we could essentially pay them whatever their payment schedule is, if all that's upfront, but then we have a clawback, but if it's not here by October 1st, we yank back half the money, whatever the deliverables are.
Well, the only, I like that idea, but the real problem is, is that we're only dealing with, we're only talking about the $478,000.
Right.
If we don't get it in, we don't get the grant money.
Right.
That's the penalty that we have, and that's in the millions of dollars. So are they liable for any part of that for not getting us the material that we need to have in order to get the contract? No, they're not. Okay. We can't make that, we can't make that happen.
I mean, you could make whatever you want happen, it's gonna come at a cost. So this $478,000 contract could go up to $1 million if that's what you want.
Well, then, that goes back to my original idea of, we need, we need milestones. So if they're failing, I don't, I don't think they're gonna fail in this particular contract. But at the same token, if something happens and they don't need it, we have enough time because there's a milestone somewhere that lets us know that we gotta rush out and get somebody else to do this, and then ask for a Myakoba from FEMA because something happened. Whether they give it to us or not, that's another question.
I've seen contracts written where there were timelines and certain things, penalties built in, and if the person doing the work did not get the job done, then they had to pay a penalty. Now, I've also seen when tried to do something like that, and whoever wants to do the work says, I'm not gonna do that. I won't even bother signing the contract with you. Is that a possibility?
Like, anything is possible.
And ultimately, we have to, they have to agree to it. So we can say whatever we want to, if they don't agree with it, and pretty much everybody's engineering firms is gonna be the same way. I think the best thing we can do is set a hard deadline, and then we know how to manage those payments once we have their payment schedule. And it's just if you don't have the debt, if you don't have our deliverables, they don't get the money. It's pretty simple.
Well, that's why we have a manager. So sir, I would ask you to work with Tom Z and the contractor to figure out how we put that wording in here. I, I'm gonna ask you another question. Can we approve this today, provided you get that kind of language in there?
Yes, I think you approved it with a date by October 1st and authorized me to execute the documents and to further clarify that contract language.
Thank you, sir.
So moved.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Is there any questions? Not hearing all in favor say aye? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, kind sir. The next, it's a presentation only, which is the historic design standards. And I guess it's Mo and Chief Drew?
Yes, thank you. Yes. Good morning. I'm gonna just give a brief overview, and then I will turn it over to Chair Chief Drew, so we can talk you through and answer any questions that you may have about the design standards. So the City of Southport Historic Preservation Commission was established in September of 2022. So the commission itself is established and is one of the commissions of the city, so that has been officially taken care of. And then the first meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission was training with the North Carolina Historic Preservation Office in November of 2022. So the commission itself, the members are Chair Drew, Vice Chair Rick Pukinas, Alexis Gore Graves, Aboner Herring, Josh Klein-McGee, Jim McKee, Joanne Wesson, and Bonnie Bray, and Tao West are the alternates. And we have some of our members here today with us, so thank you very much. They can help us. So moving forward, the commission needed to make sure that there was a district inventory. There were goals of the HPC, and there were rules of procedure. Next, please. So the goals of the preservation, there were four main goals. They were gonna be preserved, promote, and prevent. So the commission endeavors to preserve the heritage of Southport. They want to establish policies and procedures to prevent the loss of historically significant structures. They want to lead efforts to provide education on the benefits of the preservation to property owners, and they wanna support public participation in historic preservation process. So those were the four goals, but they wanted, it was the three Ps that they were really going for, the preserve, promote, and prevent, and those are the big goals. So, and the next, once they had their goals, there has to be a local historic district. So the map that you see here, and I will be getting some updated maps, this is a little different than previous maps that you have seen. This is the district that the commission was recommending from their March 5th meeting. It takes out some property off of Kingsley Street, as well as the yacht basin itself, because these properties do not have contributing features anymore, and would be taken away from the district itself. And I know that there is a lot of concern about the yacht basin, but it is also being designated as a maritime working waterfront in the comprehensive plan. So that will preserve the ability for them to be built back where they are. So that is covered, and we can still establish historic markers and things in that area. It just won't be part of the local district itself. So that is our historic district. The standards, we started in February '23, and so yes, it has been a while, but we are building this commission from the ground up, so it does take time. The standards account for variety of architecture, age, and historic significance. And things are gonna be considered individually. It's not a map, a zoning map, like you would think, but it'll be an overlay. So each certificate of appropriateness, we consider individually for that. So that's kind of just a quick overview. And then we wanna make sure we preserve our scenic vistas as well. So here's some, some of the protected areas we wanna make sure are protected and brought forward. So at this time, I will turn it over to Chief Drew, and I'm able to answer any questions you may have to.
Good morning. We appreciate your time today. This has been a long time coming. When the Southport Board of Aldermen made the decision to create a Historic Preservation Commission, I was sitting in the meeting that night, and I thought, I'm gonna apply for this. I love history, and I love Southport, and there's nothing greater that I think that a native of Southport, or a newcomer from Southport could do besides preserve, protect, and promote the character of Southport. One of the most valuable assets that we have is the character of Southport. That's why people come here. Unfortunately, they don't come here because of the Board of Aldermen or the mayor. And I hate to tell you all that, but they, they don't come here, they come here because what they like. They see what they like downtown, but you directly affect that. You directly affect everything in this town. The Historic Preservation Commission was established by the Board of Aldermen, September 2022. Since that time, our commission has met... Since that time, our commission has met monthly, sometimes twice a month. We have spent countless hours of debating, collaborating, and creating the design standards that are being presented before you today. The key word that I want to concentrate on today is collaboration. There has been a lot of collaboration that's been taken into consideration with these standards from the planning board, from the public, from this board, from staff, from citizens coming to our meetings. This document has been revised. We've reworked it. We've redone it several times with much input by the public. I'm very proud that our commission have been very responsive to public input and questions. There were two very well-attended public forums where every suggestion from our citizen was, citizens that were there were addressed. We wrote their suggestions down. We went back. We met on each one individually and worked them into the document that's before you in detail. The commission's main goal, as Mo has already said, is prevention, promotion, preservation. This document, although it is a regulatory document, is not so much about regulation as it is the protection of Southport's character and charm. Since 1980, Southport has had a designation of a historic district boundary with no protection. There has been a boundary, but anyone can do anything as long as it meets the UDO, the building codes, within that boundary. This document that's before you protects the boundary. It gives guidelines to establish and protect the character of downtown Southport, our vistas, our historic buildings. Being a native of Southport, I've watched over the years the demolition and the destruction of many historic structures in our city. And when this Historic Preservation Commission started, I had citizens, natives, newcomers come to me and say, it's too late to do this. But I vehemently oppose that rhetoric. We must preserve what we have left. I realize we've lost a lot, but we can't just stand back and do nothing. We must save what we have. We must protect our historic character. We must prevent the destruction of the Southport charm. And we must promote education of why these standards are so valuable. Let's educate our citizens why they're so valuable. The remaining character of Southport now rests on your shoulders with this document that you have. What future does Southport have depends on your decision. And we present this to you. We want you to digest all that information. It is a lot of information, and we have been digesting it for two years, working in and out of this document. And so that, this is our presentation. We're presenting this to you, and I expect questions. I expect you to come back after this meeting. You can email the commission. You can email us through Mo. We can discuss anything that you have concerns about in the commission and, and moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Is there questions from the board? Go ahead.
We're talking, one of the sections is fences and walls. We also have a new policy about right-of-way. So if the fences and walls versus our overall arching right-of-way policy come into conflict, which is the policy that is the one that is used?
The right-of-way policy will be the first one, and they don't have to be enforced first and foremost. And then anything coming past that will then be part of the decision by the Historic Preservation Commission. Now, in the right-of-way enforcement that we have, we have made provisions for historic fences that are existing within the National Register, which would then become part of the local district so that those can remain and be maintained if they are within the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Chief, I've got a tough one. In order to preserve our character, have we got to keep giving it away for free? Is that, is that required that everything's free, that we hold on to? Is that Southport's character? Are we going to lose our character if we make people pay to come here?
I don't understand what you're talking about giving away for free.
More like parking, things of that nature. Would that be something that would you'd feel like that would affect our heritage or any of that?
No, I mean, that's a decision that the board has to make on things like that, but I don't think that that would affect our historic character.
Okay.
We're, we're basically talking about the look, historic buildings, the feel, when you, when you drive down the street, making sure that, you know, everything is in line with the character of, of the architecture of what we've had in the past. And we, we don't want somebody to come down here on Moore Street and build an igloo to sell popsicles. You know, this document's going to protect us from having that happen on a vacant lot. Have it hap, somebody couldn't tear down a historic home and, and just start from ground zero. We want to save that. Now, there's going to be times that they're going to have to be torn down, but that needs to be a last resort.
And again, it's, it's not about our parking or our, you use your, the views, the things of that nature. They're not going to prevent us from doing anything that will help us economically or whatever.
Alderman Spencer, you know, modern amenities are allowed as long as they still fit in with the character of, of the area. So that would be something that the commission would have to consider. But if there are other communities you can take a look at, like if you're parking, for instance, if they wanted to be some upgrades or improvements to the parking, or say, some parking fees, there are ways to implement those without taking away from the district itself.
Other questions? Sir, I have a couple for you. One is an observation. I was just reading this past week on another part of the country, and they were highlighting 12 historic waterfront towns in an area of the country that Mr. Lippa is actually very familiar with. And they were able to fend off mega millions came from the urban centers that wanted to change the historical nature of it. So I'm supportive of that. I, I'm only, I think I've attended two of those of your meetings, and one of them, you had a, you gave a presentation in regards to, I own a 900-square-foot building on a very nice lot, lots of live oak. And if I can only, always only remain within that footprint, the value of that property and the live oak is not important. It's only the value of the 900 square foot. And you had a suggestion as to how that might be, there's a compromise there. Is, was that compromise incorporated into this?
Yes, sir. This, this does not prevent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mo, this does not prevent additions being added on to existing structures.
They would just have to be in a certain style to, to keep the consistency of it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
I was, that's the term I use, and who I've had with you, is the taking of that part. The only question I really have is for the manager. If the manager would work with Mr. Vandera and the follow-up on his question about where the lines are. If those are the conversation that took place just prior to your entrance into the room, so we can work that out. Any other questions? Thank you for this presentation.
I, I just want to make one quick comment. Awesome job. I'm so grateful. Y'all have done a yeoman's work. I mean, for two years, y'all have showed up and produced a document that I'm eternally grateful for. So thank you.
I'd like to add, we three were the ad hoc committee to put this thing together, interviewed for members of the HPC, and you have exceeded all of my highest expectations.
But it wasn't all of board.
I'm sorry?
The, the topic was an all, was the entire board. You three actually were the, the subcommittee, I guess, to do it? Yeah. Yeah.
It was an ad hoc committee that, God, how long did we work on this? A year? We found out from the State Historic Preservation Office what, what we had to do, what the structure of this would be, what the possibilities and limits would be. Then we presented that along with recommendations for how many members and so forth to the whole board, and the board accepted it. Then we advertised for members. Wait, wait, I think, I think we had 22 applications.
Okay, thank you. Next, the next topic up is Cheyenne, the license plate issue.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Aldermen, City Manager. I am just here to ask permission to move forward with the requested contests for community art submissions for the license plate. You have it in your agenda packet, but just some quick notes really to let the public know what's going on and also just to go through. Y'all can feel free to stop me at any point if you have any specific questions. A reminder, our minimum for the pre-registrations would need to be 500 by February 2026, by February 15th, 2026. That will give us a month to collect the rest of our documents, any paperwork that we need to get mailed to Raleigh, to the General Assembly, for them to review it, to make its way onto the agenda for next year's legislative season. What this would include is a community submission contest. City staff will select the finalists, which would be at least three, but not to exceed five. And then the Board of Aldermen would select the final, the finalist, the winner out of those three, four, or five finalist selections. We will accept submissions through EventMe, so Community Relations is helping me out and going to allow me to use their system to piggyback off of that. We will require a $10 entry fee, which will go directly to the cash prize for the winner that Alderman Spencer suggested. And then that way, that also cuts the cost a little bit for us using the EventMe system and any additional stuff that we need to do. It also helps us keep bots out of the system and people submitting like 30 different drawings. We are looking at, if approved by you guys, we would start the contest a week from today, so Monday, August 14th, 2025. It would open up to the community, and we would run it through Sunday, June 1st, 2025. And staff, the staff finalist selections will be to y'all to review no later than the June 12th, 2025 Board of Aldermen meeting. That was a lot, but do you have questions you have?
Are there any questions from the board?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a sense of whether there's excitement in the art community to participate in this? Do you have any, any expectation of how many designs we might get?
No, ma'am. We haven't announced it. We haven't even announced there was a potential opportunity because it wasn't set in stone yet. So we wanted to make sure that that was agreed upon before we went out and, and started marketing that and asking for submissions. But I, I'm sure that we'll have a good turnout for that because how can you not submit a pretty picture of downtown Southport?
Knowing this board, we probably will want to see all of them and not just three or five. Could you maybe put, give us at the end of not to exceed 10, for example?
I would highly suggest not going up that high because once you get past about five submissions, they start looking the same. But we can also look at how many submissions we get. If we get 1,000 submissions, then we can look more at, okay, narrowing it down to three or five might be a little more difficult. So we'll base it off of the number of submissions that we get and make sure that it's relative to, like, the finalist numbers are relative to, to how many.
Are there age parameters? In other words, can kids do designs?
Sure. Yeah. We didn't want to limit it to age, so that way anybody in the Southport community who felt led to submit could. For EventMe though, for my folks in the audience and at home, if you do have a child under the age of 18 who wants to submit, you have to, like, according to the terms and conditions for EventMe, you guys have to be with them to do that. But other than that, there, we are not putting an age limit on there.
The, Cheyenne, the only thing that occurs to me is you might want to keep the artist confidential till after it's decided.
Yes.
The names of the artists so that everything's being judged just basically on the art and not.
Yes, ma'am. What the, this is not the exact way, but what we do is just show you the picture. So what we'll do, if y'all remember back when I showed you like the gray outline, we will provide that to the submitter so that way they can make adjustments if necessary. So you will see it as if it was on a license plate, not just here as a canvas, imagine that kind of thing. But yes, ma'am.
Nice catch, Alderman Moss Tyler. Like that. Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
I do need a vote to move forward.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I will entertain a motion to accept, approve the guidelines and move forward with the license plate submission contest.
So move.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing all in favor say aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board.
The next topic up is the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. This morning, I want to highlight a project that you have kind of already talked about today, our shoreline stabilization project, which has been going on for several years. As you highlighted, we have a limited window until the end of next fiscal year and the end of June 2026 to encumber those funds. So an update on that project, it'll be broken down into two phases. The first phase will include new revetment and revetment repairs to the shoreline areas which are adjacent to the Southport Waterfront Park and East Bay Street. Only a general permit and permit exception will be required to complete Phase 1 work. Final designs and permitting is currently underway, and we are scheduled to bid that project later on this year by the end of summer. This project, the first phase of it, will include bid alternatives to our bidding process to allow the work to be completed in the phases to make sure we are expeditiously moving forward, and the available funding is spent through the Phase 2 to allow good funding for Phase 1 and Phase 2. Construction on Phase 1 will begin by the end of this calendar year, 2025. Phase 2 of the project includes new revetment, which is seaward of the private parcels which are located near the Riverside Motel and Oliver's and Beach Dune Restoration and Three Rip Rap Breakers, which is seaward of, on the private property near the Riverside Motel and Oliver's on that end. The major hurdle of that has been getting easements with the private landowners down there, which I'm pleased to say we have come to an agreement this past week, and our special shoreline council, Grace Stires, is finalizing that language and should have that signed in the next few weeks. We'll begin meeting with the Department of Coastal Management on site in the coming weeks to begin our application for the permitting process. That submitted through DCM will begin and be submitted early May, and we expect final permitting from DCM and the other agencies in the beginning of 2026 with final project design and constructions plans and bidding documents to be completed throughout the process. So we're not waiting on one process to complete. We're working simultaneously. So project design, construction plan, and bidding documents will be completed by 2026, the beginning of January. Bidding will be mid- Bidding will be mid 2026 in March with an anticipated project award and funding covenants of June, the first 2026, which is just a few weeks ahead of our 2026 deadline. All this and Phase Two in particular will be contingent on agency review and their approval of the permitting process. But as you said, we've delayed this project, and it is my intention that we stay on top of the project to ensure we are meeting the state required deadlines to ensure we are spending these funds as been appropriated and that that project gets to completion. Last thing I have for you tomorrow, we will continue our budget series with our next meeting at nine o'clock in India Trail to go over the community relations budget. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next thing is the mayor's comments. So I'd like to start off by, for the record, stating that the reason why this was not videoed in the beginning was not because we were trying to subvert any transparency. We just had a technical glitch in the system. And so those things happened, and I'm glad the state staff was able to get it back up online. The next thing is there was a celebration of life for Charlie Perry, who was a long time, was a lifetime resident, owned all kinds of things around here, owned the, where American Fish is. I believe he owned that is when it was a fish company. He was involved in all kinds of stuff along the maritime, in the maritime world. He gave the city money for fireworks. I mean, he did all kinds of stuff. If you have the time to read his obituary, it is quite interesting. And on the same day, and at the exact same time as that celebration of life, I thought it was interesting that the blessing of the fleet took place. Kind of followed up on his, his storyline throughout the city. I think there were 22 vessels. It was, they liked today, windy out, so that limited the smaller vessels from participating in it. All went very well. Great event. If you never got to see it, you should, next year try. It's the end of April, and it's, it dates back 800, 1,000 years in the Mediterranean. And the pollen seems to be subsiding, so that's a good thing. It's the season thing that comes through here. I've finally stopped sneezing. And I want to thank the board for working on all these projects as we move forward. We've got a lot of things and a lot of dollars to look at and not a lot of dollars coming in. So it's always a challenge to figure out how we do this, as everybody has great ideas. There really are a lot of great ideas out there, but there's a limited amount of funding to do that. And that's the big challenge. And so I will start with Alderman Lay. Do you have any comments, sir?
I'd like to thank Bob, Tom, Mo, Cheyenne, for all that you did today. Very interesting presentations, a great deal of information provided. I have a meeting this afternoon with the A B C Board and with all the upheaval at the national level. I'm anticipating an increase in business there.
Alderman Spencer.
I really appreciate what you've done with the historic preservation. And what I'm going to say has nothing, I know who's on the committee, including Vonner Harry. I'm glad that you've got Vonner Harry inactive, and he should be one of our leaders coming up in the future. And you said the words, and again, I'm not killing the messenger, but every time we get, preserves the historic character of Southport. It's almost like putting handcuffs on. And that's why I asked the question, will we be able to preserve our character if we don't give away Southport for free? Will we change our character if we make people pay to come and look at the water versus giving it away? Is that part of our heritage? From everything I've seen for the last 20 years, it's been no this, no that, no port, no this, no meals tags, no this, no that. No has got us put into a corner where we're in trouble financially, and the long-term perspective doesn't look good for try. And, and that's why when I hear historic preservation, overlay districts, all these things, they're, they sound like we're protecting people that are coming in the future. But what happens is it ends up hurting the people that have been here forever. These rules are really not affecting the new people. They're affecting the landowners. Our tree permits, who gets those fines? People that have been here forever, most of the time. All these rules, they keep adding up to, and it's not, and for me, sometimes it doesn't preserve the historic character. It sabotages our future. So I'm afraid sometimes when they, I know, I know the messenger and I trust the messenger, but I know how this ends up turning around and biting us back in the behind most of the time. Thank you for working on Bonnet's Creek Phase One. I'm sure that's not a bridge, but we're at least moving forward and, and making sure that those neighborhoods will have some drainage solutions like Bonnet's Landing, I think, is right there at Bonnet's Creek. So thank you for that hard work. You see, anything else? I always forget things. That'll be it for right now. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
I'd like to say thank you to our Public Works Department. We had some drainage issues and a pipe replaced at Spike Rush Trail in Indigo, as well as going back into Indigo. We've got some much-needed patches on the road that have been deteriorating over a number of years. But it's, it's nice to be able to ride through there right now. So thank you for that. And then to Charlie Perry, he left legacy in Southport. The barge off of which we shoot fireworks has been Charlie Perry's barge for as far back as I can remember, and he will be missed here in town.
Alderman Davis. Alderman Carroll.
Are you sure? Don't encourage her. I've got two things for the manager, really. One is the corner from Bay Street to Moore on Atlantic, that stretch of road is in horrible disrepair, and it's also not wide enough. So certainly something we should consider as we move forward with our budgeting. And then I would like us to bring in someone into our May meeting for, to discuss paid parking.
Alderman Mossdeller. I'm sorry.
We, I just wanted to, I was just going to pay parking. I have a question for the city manager regarding shoreline stabilization. I see in our C I P plan that we're saying 3, 3, 250, 3 million, 250. I just want to make sure it was 5 million, that the 1.75 is accounted for in all this, and we're going to use it.
That's right.
And what we haven't already used.
That's right. It is. Well, the whole $5 million plus the interest will be utilized.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That, the other thing is also again for the city manager, as we move forward in the budget process, I just wanted to reiterate the need for activity-based budgeting by department so we understand what it's being paid for in each department, what, what we get for that and that sort of thing. And then finally, this is really for planning staff to look. There are several bills coming out from the Senate in North Carolina that will affect our ability to do things, regulations. There are four, in particular, Senate Bill 495, regulation to allow accessory dwellings in all residential areas, regardless of zoning. So Senate Bill 497, expand middle housing to allow townhomes and up to six plus, six plexes in all residential zones. For Senate Bill 499, having to do with allowing housing in commercial zones. And Senate Bill 688. So if we could have our planning staff just be on the lookout with those bills and let us know what's happening.
Absolutely. Mo is getting us together a thorough review, and she should have that out shortly.
I have just one quick ask of the manager before I ask for adjournment. And that is, could you, at your earliest convenience, give us an update on the $700 million that was left over in the state funding to the state, the federal funding to the state on stormwater for, well, stormwater, but first stuff for reference to the tropical storm eight? And if we're going to apply for more and how we're going to apply for it and how it interconnects with what we're already doing? Thank you. And with that, I would ask, I take a motion for adjournment. There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.